Closed session, Barstow City Council, Barstow Fire Protection District meeting for October 21st, 2025 to order at 6:00 PM and ask everyone to stand for the pledge and please follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right. Madam Clerk, we have the roll call, please.
Yes, roll call is complete and all members are present.
Thank you. Participation is invited. If you wish to be heard on any item on the agenda, including any item on the consent calendar, please so indicate by filling out a speaker request card and hand it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Code of Ethics is your elected governing board. We will remember the code of ethics that we voluntarily and unanimously approved. During this meeting, we will treat each other and the public with patience, civility, and courtesy. The decisions made tonight will be for the benefit of the Barstow community and not for personal gain. Public comment of closed session. This is the time and the place for the general public to address the governing board on matters on the closed session agenda and within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes or less. All requests to speak must be received prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Madam Clerk?
We have no comment.
With that, I will call for a motion to go into closed session. I have a motion by Councilmember Hernandez, a second by Councilmember Noble. Call for the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
That will go into closed session.
While Jesus and his followers were traveling, Jesus went into a town. And a woman, Martha, let Jesus stay at her house. Martha had a sister named Mary who was seated seating at Jesus's feet, listening to his teaching. But Martha was busy with all the work to be done. She went in and said, "Lord, don't you care that my sister has left me alone to do all the work? Tell her to help me." But the Lord answered, "Martha, Martha, you are worried and upset about things. Only one thing is important, and Mary has chosen the better. It will never, she will ne, I will never take it away from her."
So we, we say, we are in a town, Lord Jesus, and we're in a house that we recognize that we need your teaching, Lord God. We need you to have a way with us, Lord God, in a way that you would say, "Teach me, Lord." That we get so busy and tied up in business, stress, worrying over family. But the one thing is needed is you, Lord Jesus, to teach us, to teach us who you are, that we can admire you, and you will never take yourself away from us. So we invite you into this place, Lord Jesus, and we ask you, teach us, teach us your ways, we ask you. King Jesus, we ask you in your name, amen.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much for your patience.
Thank you, Chaplain. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, roll call is complete and all members are present.
Thank you. Participation is invited. If you wish to be heard on any item on the agenda, including any item on the consent calendar, please so indicate by filling out a speaker request card and hand it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Code of Ethics, as your elected governing board, we will remember the code of ethics that we voluntarily and yet unanimously approved. During this meeting, we will treat each other and the public with patience, civility, and courtesy. The decisions made tonight will be for the benefit of the Barstow community and not for personal gain. Review and approve the agenda. This is the time for the members of the governing board to call for rearranging the order of the agenda, adding items or removing items from the agenda, or removing items from the consent calendar for discussion and/or separate action. Items may only be added to the agenda as allowed by state law, included Government Code Section 54954.2 Subdivision B, allowing emergency items to be added by majority vote and allowing items that arose to the city attention after the agenda posting deadline but which require immediate action. To be added by a two-thirds vote of the council members present at the meeting, or if less than two-thirds of the council members are present, a unanimous vote of those members present. At this time, I'll ask for the motion to approve the agenda, and staff has recommended that we take item four and table that.
With, with the exception of table four.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Hernandez to approve the agenda, removing item four, or table item four, a second by Mayor Potem Rose, and I'll call for the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously, approving the agenda and tabling item four.
With that, we have one presentation item, which is the city manager and council attended the League of City Annual Conference. So I'll give this to the city manager, Ms. Clayton.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is to provide an update to the staff and public about the conference that, as Mayor Silva stated, he, Mayor Potem, and Councilman Williams, and I attended this conference on October 8th. Williams and I attended this conference on October 8th. And I know that we previously, I can't recall which meeting it was, but we did have a public comment request to bring back information when we have these conferences. And I do think it's valuable to demonstrate to the public the value in these conferences. So I'll have a quick presentation. One of the largest benefits is the networking and meeting with other cities that are facing the same challenges that our cities are, whether it's citywide, department-wide, small, unique issue. There are a wide variety of classes and sessions that are, that are put on by the League of California Cities. And one that was, I felt very, very applicable to us, as a small city in Barstow, was the small cities building connections and sharing solutions. And I'm just going to go through, and I have snippets of the PowerPoints at some of these. Of course, there were a lot of sessions between all of us that were attending. We tried to attend different sessions so that we're not duplicating and getting, you know, the unique information to bring back. But one of the other benefits is that they do provide the materials for every session to all, all attendees. This one specifically was about, again, small cities. Four hundred and eighty-three cities are incorporated in California. Of those, 263 have populations under 30,000, as Barstow does, with the unique fiscal administration political realities. Now, a lot of the issues that are facing Barstow now are the same issues that are facing many of these cities. This item was to propose a coalition of these small cities to look at the policy, fiscal, staffing. One of the, one of the slides, I don't believe I had it in this one, was the staffing that issues that we face here. We have a small staff because of limited resources. So many of us wear multiple hats. And it does say, you know, staffing, sharing, sharing expertise across the cities. That's information sharing, so that we're not reinventing the wheel or spending so much time to create solutions. We can all share the ideas and come, and whether we have the great idea to share with another city, or they're bringing it to us, you come across a lot of information, can network, and you can even, you know, I always end up reaching out to people after the fact and creating those relationships that can even help down the road when you need to reach out for additional information if they have some expertise. Again, this proposal is to have, have a coalition of small cities with a steering committee of electeds rotating geographically and activities quarterly, listservs, and annual roundtables. Those listservs mean that it's a group list where if you have an issue, a question, you can reach out to the listserv, and it goes out to all of those cities' contacts. And you immediately, I'm a part of several of those groups, and you immediately get responses and have options that you can look at that are, you know, beyond what you're thinking. Everybody thinks differently and brings different ideas. So it's, I fully, that's really valuable. Another, just, I'm touching on some, a handful of the sessions through this. Reducing the cost of general plan updates was presented by the same firm, Placeworks, that's providing our city's general plan update. The mayor included this information in his handout, I know, so I won't spend too much time on it. But it goes through where you can create efficiencies when you have a general plan update, because it is a large undertaking that's proposed to happen. It's required by cities to have your general plan in place, and it's proposed that you update every 10 years. It has been since 2015, since, I believe, our city has adopted our current general plan. Another great resource that I found is they had parking, a parking presentation on the challenges of parking. With the legislature, legislature regulating ADUs, actually reducing the restrictions on, on cities, what where cities are allowed to put on homeowners that want to put in ADUs. They have allowed that due to the crisis that the state faces with housing and their requirements to increase affordable housing, which ADUs do create that opportunity. But they have not given cities the flexibility to, to impose parking restrictions along with that. So there are a lot of parking issues that different cities face. This was just an overview. Was more specific to overcrowding parking in multiple areas, but it is something that we face now, where we're required to let the ADUs move forward, but we can't require the restrictions on parking. Another great presentation was on a technology plan. I know we are moving forward with expanding ours, but a full technology master plan is critical to a city's infrastructure and technology. And this just laid out what some of the roles in technology planning, from the city council to the city manager to the IT team, and how important it is to the city and not just city services in city facilities, but across the city as far as your, your infrastructure, technology planning. This one was very applicable to our city. And it talked about the resources that public safety has with technology, maximizing resources and making crime-solving more efficient with data intelligence tools. There are so many data intelligence tools, and I know our police department is implementing a few of those now. We're looking at a camera system. They have their, their internal body-worn camera system and their vehicles, but it's expanding that to, to cover across the city. There are the license plate readers that we already know are effective. Now that's expanded to a detection if a gun is fired. And that can immediately notify the police where it came from, so that they can immediately respond. Those datas, data collections are really important for our police to respond as quickly as possible. And one of the, one of the case studies was, within four hours, they were able, across, across a very large spanned area, they were able to capture and detain somebody who had committed multiple fatal crimes. Just one of the many case studies. It's an amazing tool. It's also helpful with the ongoing issue that every agency has with hiring, public safety, the rising cost of public safety, and how you can gain efficiencies with your staffing. So it was such an awesome presentation. And being able to bring this back, and it's one that I will, I know Sekev North are looking at me, I haven't sent it to him yet, but great information in a real-time safety system. Another one was looking at homeless and looking at what other cities have done, what their trials and challenges and solutions have become. The Redlands City Manager, which I worked with closely in my, in my previous history of city management, what their successes were with their homeless solutions in Redlands. And you can see in this graph, and it might be too small, but from 2023, when they had 322 homeless, to 2024, 213, and then 2025, 146, nearly cutting 50% of their homeless through multiple solutions of connecting them to short-term housing, recuperative care, and other, other long-term solutions with their coordinators and their different coordinations with local agencies. Another great presentation was the disaster recovery checklist and best practices. We all know that a disaster can come at any time. And what is the impact? How do you respond? And how do you recover? I know one on the picture, the right-hand side, is the flooding. We did have flash flooding, fires. And of course, we don't have the tornadoes in this area. But when you have those major disasters and they bring your city facilities down, you lose your data. You lose your ability, potentially, to keep operating, to respond, because if you don't have access to your data, you lose the ability to make purchases on those emergency purchases that are necessary during those times. And so a backup plan, and where that data backup is, is a critical, critical component to city operations. And I'll go quickly through the rest, because there are a lot of, a lot of good, good topics at these conferences. But some of just hitting local government that are helpful in reminders, or just annual required trainings that government officials are required to do, they offer. So that's also a helpful tool, to attend those classes and trainings together. You gain more information, and you're basically taking care of two, two things at one time. You get the conference benefits, but you also satisfy your requirements. This one was, I felt, a really good, just a presentation addressing erosion in the trust of local government. I know that all governments face that lack of trust. You usually go to a government agency if you have a problem, and you're already, typically, a lot of the public is going with a, with a negative tone. And if you don't, aren't receiving satisfaction on what you're going to that government agency for, it only furthers that mistrust. So this one just talked about how to regain that trust if you have those, those residents that feel that way with communicating transparently, good governance in your ethics, facilitating civil discourse, but going, the focus on rule of law and accountability, explaining decisions clearly, structured public engagement, those are all very important. And I look forward to expanding our outreach and our accountability. And again, these are just some of the required trainings, our AB 1234. We have these, again, every other year, as public officials require to attend these trainings. So it's helpful to be able to attend those with others. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I'll bring it to council. And this being a presentation, this would be for questions and discussion. And I just want to let the public know that Councilmember Williams, Mayor Potem Rose, and I did coordinate the sessions that we would attend, so that none of us attended the same sessions, so we got more value out of this conference, with the exception, one of my sessions ended early, and there was a long session of legal issues. So I joined probably the last quarter of that, which Councilmember Williams was already attending. I did place my notes from the session in the lobby. If you didn't pick them up, there's 20 copies out there. If they disappear, I'll bring more. But these are notes of all the sessions I attended, except my book says there's one I attended, which I couldn't find any notes for. So that one's not in there. Okay. Council members, any questions or discussion? Mayor Potem Rose.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Clayton, for doing that overview, because you touched some of the things that I had actually attended. And it's really good to see other cities that are comparable to us on what they're doing with the homeless and how they're thinking out of the box. And I brought some, you know, some ideas for, for what they're doing. They're even doing like workshop resumes, you know, helping the general public with, with the clothes closet, so that when they do go out and, you know, we try to transform somebody that's on the streets into, into a job, that they are dressed professionally inadequately for, for that appointment, or for that, for their interview, should I say. One thing that I don't believe was touched, and I just want to showcase our own, very own, Mr. Matthew Summers. On Thursday, he actually was part of the presenters, the speakers, and this was on affordable housing, what city attorneys and cities need to know. And I would love for our attorney to touch a little bit on what he had presented, because I was so proud, extremely impressed. So, and the person that was sitting next to me, a mayor from a different city, was extremely impressed and gave me a card so that they could retain Mr. Summers' law firm for their city. So if I may, Mayor, you know, if Mr. Summers can give us a brief overview?
Happy to, through the mayor. Thank you, thank you, Mayor Potem. Yeah, no, I spoke on affordable housing, together with some colleagues from other firms. And the emphasis was on how to achieve positive affordable housing projects using a case study, where the focus is on build community support for the project, explain the basis for the project, and work closely with the affordable housing developers. These are your low-income, sometimes senior, but low-income housing projects, to ensure that the community support is in place, the finances, financing is in place, and that the process goes through smoothly at the city planning level, to ensure the project gets through. And in that case study, we were able to get a 50-unit, 100% affordable project without any city subsidy, which means no public money was spent from the city. There's some federal money, some state money, but no money from the city to get that project forward. And I look forward to bringing those opportunities to Barstow, with the added note that we also, the same strategies work for bringing to bear market-rate housing, which we also have need of here. And we're moving that forward, together with the Community Development Department, on a number of projects you'll see coming soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Summers.
Thank you. I also wanted to, you know, to, to say that they were giving out graduation certificates for, for members, council members, that would go and enter the Tork Leadership Program. And I don't, I would like to, to look into this and potentially, you know, provide, or provide the information to each and every one of the council members who might be interested in going into this additional training. It would just continue to help us with professional development and staying on the cusp of everything that's, that's new on cities and, you know, how we can be more proactive in what we're doing as decision-makers. And I also attended one of the required trainings on Friday morning, and I, I really enjoyed it. The one thing that I, I did want to also share is that I gave a flyer to Ms. Mary Val Hernandez in regards to the Home Key Grant. I found out at the conference that there is still money out there for Home Key available, because there was not enough applicants. So I'm hoping that we can share that with those here in our town to try to go after money that's still available. And also, I gave her a little flyer that, it was nine years ago, and I don't have the flyer in front of me, but we, as a city, had signed that we could attest that we have the logo in Godfrey Trust in this room. At one point in time, I believe that it was here, but it's no longer here. And I would like for this council to consider that we put In Godfrey Trust back up in this council.
I'll give you a second on that.
Thank you. And so, again, a very, very good conference. I can't wait till next year, because there's always something new to learn, and, and we can bring it back. If we just bring one thing back, that conference would, is worth it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Councilmember Williams?
Yeah, so I attended a couple of things, you know, the city youth communication. I don't know why they put me in that. I thought my communication was great, but mayor, mayor decided to put me in that one, so I went. Emergency planning and a couple of things. But what I want to do is, I want to make sure that the cost of this conference is back to the people, from our food, from our travel, everything that we've charged back to the taxpayers, because I think it's important you guys see exactly what you're paying for. And, you know, I wanted to make sure that, that we're transparent as possible to make sure you understand what's going on. It was a great conference. I think the biggest thing I got out of it was, was the communication with other cities, getting to see the different types of things. But the emergency plan was kind of amazing. And I wanted to kind of know what our police chief and captains and our fire chief are going through. So going through that emergency planning, I got to tell you, it's, that's crazy. I hope we never have to go through that. But I learned a lot. And, and I also respect you guys for what you're doing, because that's intense. And not only state and federal, but just, just the, the detail and planning was, was pretty amazing. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Williams, Mayor Potem Rose.
Um, yes. Thank you, Councilman Williams, for bringing up the costs of the conference
Yes, thank you, Councilman Williams, for bringing up the costs of the conference because we did pre-approve it. But who would be, who would like to talk about the per diem and the mileage? Because that's pretty much, pretty straightforward on, on, on travel, correct? Ms. Clayton?
Yes, we do have a policy, and I'll ask Director Harris to provide more information, but we do have a, a policy on the per diem. Mileage is set, meals are set. Hotel does vary based on availability, but those are the primary costs in addition to the actual registration for the conference.
Correct. Meals as well as travel are the rates that are set by the IRS, and we follow the guidelines that are set as the standard. So currently, our per diem is set at $100 a day for meals, and that includes all three meals. Travel, I'm not 100% certain when it's set up currently, but it is a per mile, I believe last year it was about 50 cents per mile. And so that is standard across the board. So once the conference is complete, we receive the reimbursement request from council members or staff, and we follow those guidelines accordingly.
Thank you. So I just like, wanted to make sure that the general public is well aware that, that it's, everything that was spent on any conferences, not just with the council members, but anybody that travels, that we are bound to abide by those policies set forth and that there is no abuse whatsoever on any above and beyond charges. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Williams?
What I, what I also want is the, what it costs us to go there. I mean, what we paid to attend that. So the total cost is for everything, not individual specific things. Just give me the total cost. I think the residents need to know what it costs to send us out of there.
We would have to bring that back at the next meeting because we haven't completed all the reimbursement requests yet.
Yeah, so it's not intended for looking at any specific things, but in the past, when I was standing out there, I would ask those same questions, and I'm going to ask the same questions here. So, you know, the total cost or whatever it is, and it doesn't have to be individual names, just give us the total, total cost for everybody.
Thank you. So the last, thank you, Councilmember Williams. Last thing I'd like to add is one thing I learned that's not in my notes. I forgot to take a notepad to the first conference, and I learned that I can actually take pretty good notes on my phone. And then that made it easier because when I go back and read my handwritten notes, I don't know what I wrote because my writing is terrible. And then in my phone, I was able to copy and paste it right into Word. So a suggestion for other council members, because I see you took handnotes, it actually worked very well to just type it on my phone. So with that, that ends our presentations, and we will move on to general non-agendized public comments. This is the time?
Mayor, I'm sorry, we do have public comment on this.
I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Our speaker is Mr. Mike Hernandez.
Welcome, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you. I was just curious, was there any presentation given concerning the cannabis industry and how we can better control it? I didn't know if there was. I was kind of curious if you had anything, because we have such a hard time trying to control the people with the cannabis here, with the odor. I was surprised that nobody gave a presentation or something like that. But that was one of the questions. The next one is, did the city manager have a chance, or is there such a thing as a study so you know how to deal with the general public? Because I honestly believe you are failing in that section. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Any other requests to speak?
I have no more.
Okay, I'll bring it back to council and I'll state that I did not attend any session on cannabis. Did any council member? I believe not.
Mayor, no. In fact, I didn't see anything on our choices. So I mean, that can always be in a recommendation for an upcoming League of Cities, but there is a process on how to get that on an agenda of such magnitude.
Through the committee, I'll bring it to a committee member. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to general non-agendized public comment. This is the time and the place for the general public to address the governing board on matters not on the agenda and within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes or less. All requests to speak must be received prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
We do. Our first speaker is Ms. Teresa Tank.
Welcome, Ms. Tank.
Thank you. On August 19th, I inquired about the 55,000 check written on 732 Burt Tech for the rehab of 2340 West Main Street. Councilman Williams and the Mayor Pro Tem motioned for the staff to bring back the total cost of how much the city shelter project costs the city and ultimately the residents. It's been two months, and I haven't heard any mention on what that project cost us. The reason why I asked this question is I see in the voucher list, the city is still paying for utilities on that building as of 9/26. I'd like to know why we're still paying for the utilities and when that might end since we aren't occupying the building any longer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tank.
Our next speaker is Mr. Eugene Buticci.
Welcome, Mr. Buticci.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Just a reminder that on day after tomorrow, Thursday, over at the Harvey House, there will be a job fair and resource event being presented by County Supervisor Don Rao, along with the County of San Bernardino, and I know I'm going to miss a few here. The Recorder's Office will be there, and so if you were born in San Bernardino County and may have misplaced your birth certificate, they will be able to replace it at that time. It's between 10:00 in the morning and 1:30 in the afternoon over at the Harvey House. There probably, there's going to be somewhere between 40 and 50 employers participating in the event this year. Also later that day, the Barstow Community Coalition will be having a fentanyl symposium over at New Life Fellowship. I'm going to draw a blank on the address. I believe it's 130 West Main Street, and that will be going from 5 until 8 o'clock in the evening. I guess you could call it a part two. They did a fentanyl symposium about a year or so ago, so this is a continuation of that. And there will be a practical part of it in regards to those who may or may not be familiar as far as Narcan, Narcan, which can be used if someone's overdosing on fentanyl. There will actually be a demonstration on how to properly use that product as well. Let's see, what else do I have going on? Oh, on this past Saturday, there was a Taiwanese media group that had passed through Barstow. They've been doing quite a bit as far as along Route 66, and they were at the Harvey House at some point. They're out in Newberry Springs, and they were also over at East Main Street and First Avenue at that pocket park there. Main Street Murals had brought out their 66, those that may have seen it, I know it's about this tall, and had put it on top of the pedestal that's over at that park. And that, also during that period of time, they, the group had received a brief Main Street mural tour as well. While they were on the, on the tour, I was asked to keep an eye on the 66 to make sure they didn't disappear. And during that one hour, just to let you know, people may not realize how many people are actually, do drive Route 66 and they do look for the murals. Came across a family from Italy, one from Chile, I forgot the other Central American country that we had, there was a family there from, along with the couple of people driving through from Australia. So, and a lot of it had to do with that 66 on top of the pedestal. You got the kids peeking their head through the hole of the two sixes, and the parents are like, oh, isn't that cute? So I think it would be nice if we can...
Thank you, Ms. Buticci.
Get something for, get something for the podium.
Our next speaker is Ms. Anna Fuzi.
Welcome, Ms. Fuzi.
Thank you. Good evening. Couple of things, Barstow, Anna Fuzi, Barstow Senior Center. We're having our annual craft fair this Saturday. If any of you have ever been, there's a lot of unique items there, great for Christmas shopping, and it is a fundraiser for the Barstow Senior Center, so hope to see you all there. We do not have a grill open this year, so there is not any food available, but there are some cupcakes and other things, is my understanding, some baked goods. Also, we have our, looking for volunteers for our holiday meals and sponsorship, our holiday meal program, I think I talked about it, the last time I was here feeds, last, last year we fed 256 people, and that was just in the building alone. That's open to the public. Anybody who wants to come is invited. We also deliver meals throughout just the Barstow community, to all the hotels, homeless. We see somebody on the street, we give them a meal for Thanksgiving. So we're looking for some funding for that. I think I did send a request in. All of the, the donations that we receive are only for food. It doesn't go for paying anybody. We have all volunteers. It doesn't go for purchasing anything other than food. And like I said, I anticipate this year that we're going to have probably 100 more than we had last year, if, if not more than that. So we're preparing for that. And we also look, when you come to the Senior Center, we'd love to have you volunteer. I'm coordinating with our, our law enforcement and our fire department. They've been there every year, so I'm looking forward to them. And Mayor Silva has been there. It's, runs like a well-oiled machine. I mean, it's like Santa's elf showed up and, and they're all preparing, you know, these meals for the community. And it's really, if you haven't gone out to deliver and see where we deliver, this is how people should not live. And it's really sad and, you know, and all I can say is that it is eye-opening. Also, we are celebrating our 49th anniversary of the Barstow Senior Center. That will be November 13th at, opens at 5:00 PM. It's open to the public. We're doing disco nights, so there is a contest if you want to wear your best disco costume from the 70s. We are all decked out and ready to go for that, and that is also a fundraiser. It's $10 for the meal. We're having El Pollo Loco this year sponsor the dinner. So anyway, I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fuzi.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mike Hernandez.
Welcome, Mr. Hernandez.
I lift the wheels so it don't squeak. So you don't think it's my legs again. Mike Hernandez, Barstow, California. First of all, Ted, at the last meeting complained about the odor out in Linwood from the cannabis. And last Tuesday, I went to the doctor and I could smell it going down. And Thursday, I went to the doctor and I could smell it going down. My question to you is this. We have a city manager that travels that road every day. Why hasn't something been done out in Linwood to, to divert that cannabis odor that we're dealing? Last time, we had to deal with it over a year before something was done. Now they're supposed to have new systems working, and you could still smell it. It's bad out there, and I'm surprised that nobody's actually done anything out there or brought something forward that what's being done out there concerning it. My next item is the senior citizen contract. Has that thing been completed yet? Or is that still in limbo? My next question is, I see the city manager has doubled the income for her department, and I'm kind of wondering, I hope you double producing more work than what's being done. Because anytime you go from 900,000 to 1.8 million in a year, I expect something to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Our next speaker is Ms. Virginia Brown.
Welcome, Mrs. Brown.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to read something. Some of you will understand it and some of you won't. Broadcasting the interior of a privately owned structure without the owner's consent raises serious privacy and liability concerns, especially if the footage identifies the address or the ownership's details, if the property is under investigation or pending abatement, if the video creates reputational harm to an owner or an LLC. The LLC or owner can, if they wish, send a cease and desist or demand removal of that person because of their unauthorized entry, invasion of privacy, or defamation of their character. That's part one of the law. Elected officials in California are bound by state and local ethic rules, including California Government Code 1090, 87100, FPPC, which is the Fair Political Practices Commission, which regulates city codes and ethics. If any council member is portraying himself or herself as in a structure to fix a problem that they are personally saying, I'm here and I'm working and I'm fixing this, the city can be sued for it being put out publicly. Ethics complaints can be filed with the city clerk, city attorney, investigations by the FPPC, or county grand jury, and a censor by the city council if this conduct is deemed improper. We've had a lot of people out there saying, I don't care if they're breaking the law, they're getting things done. But I'm going to ask you all, if I went to Walmart and I stole from Walmart and I got stopped and I was told, I told the police, let's ask, you know, hey, if Pete comes up and he says, ma'am, we have to check you because you stole, and I say, but I'm doing the wrong thing for the right reasons. I'm giving it to the homeless, I'm giving it to this family, I'm still going to get taken in for theft. Breaking the law is breaking the law, and we all will be held to the law. I will. I know I will. But even more so, as our city officials, the law says, you have to be held to the law too. So doing the wrong thing for the right reason is still the wrong thing. We need to start watching each other and holding each other accountable, because there's some things going on in the city that whether they're being done for the right reason or not, they are criminal and they need to not be done, and that person needs to be reined in and brought into a proper place with the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown.
And our last speaker is Mr. Jim Brown.
Welcome, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Jim Brown, Barstow. Two weeks ago, I had come up here and I talked to Tex. And I told him, I said, Tex, sit down, please. Promise me you'll take a month off. It wasn't like that. The next week, it happened. And so, you know, you go into a house and you take city officials with you, that's wrong. House was red-tagged. It was filmed. It was put on Facebook. And if it was Paul, y'all censored Paul for doing the same thing. He couldn't even come in the building. So why are we doing it with Tex, but you're not, and you did it with Paul? So I'm just going to say this here. Tex, if they give you a chance not to do it again, don't go on Facebook. If you're going to do something, don't put it on Facebook, because that's where you get yourself in trouble. You know? And I don't know what you learned in that... And I don't know what you learned in that communication class, but the communications that you're putting out is, you know, you're doing more harm than good right now. I'm just telling you, you're doing more harm than good. Because me and you talked about it. I talked with you about it. And I told you that you're worse than Paul right now. And so I'm saying, please, lay low. Lay low.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
We have no more comment.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to public consent, consent calendar, public comment. This is the time and the place for the general public to address the governing board on all matters on the consent calendar. Speakers are asked to limit their comments on all consent items to three minutes or less. All requests to speak must be received prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have a few. Our first speaker is Mr. Dan Verogue, speaking on Item 12, which is the Community Promotional Fund for the United Way Boots and Bling.
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome, Mr. Vogel.
Dan Verogue, I'm the President of the Board of Directors of the Mojave Valley United Way, right here in Barstow. And tonight, we put on all your desks a little bit of a reminder of what your local United Way does for the community. Item 12, I wanted to thank the city staff for recommending approval of the use of the historic Harvey House for our fourth annual Boots and Bling fundraising event. And I wanted to thank the city council for considering it. I'm here to answer any questions about the event or about United Way, and if not, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Verogue.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mike Hernandez, speaking on Items 11, which is the final acceptance for the wastewater treatment plant, and Item 12, the Community Promotional Fund for the United Way Boots and Bling.
Welcome, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, sir. I'm glad to see that the sewer project came in on the budget, but I am interested in knowing what other projects are going to be done to the sewer plant, especially since big is coming our way and they're expecting a lot of expenditures in the sewer plant. So could anybody give an update at a future meeting concerning it? And Item 12, I think it's, you know, all of our organizations that need, that's why we have the fund set up, United Way. But is there any way that they could get, like some of the other programs that you have, that are already approved ahead of time? So if they come back on the following year that they're pre-approved, like you have, set up for the, some of the other projects that are going on the 4th of July and other things like that? But the Measure Q Fund is being used for promotional. And I was hoping that I could see a broader list of what items already have been approved, more than what you just put out. Is there more than that there? And do they have a budget for the Measure Q Promotional Fund? I saw the thing is $203,000, but does that mean that that's all they will exceed? They won't go over? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
That is all the comments we have on our consent.
Thank you. With that, I'll bring it to Council. Councilmember Williams, is it question of staff or discussion?
The ratification accounts, I get some questions.
Yes, go ahead.
Tire repair, page number 66, check number 100842. I've seen a lot of these flat tires. Are we checking the vehicles before we leave the facilities? Does anybody know? Because they got, and they don't say what vehicles they are, so I assume they're all city vehicles. But we got three flats here. And I'm going to assume that those are our city vehicles for public works or something to that effect. Because I don't see fire. If it was fire and police, I would see that next to it.
So I'll start with responding that we are looking into our inspection policy as we are using our vehicles. We're looking at a lot of policies and our team is working on several at one time right now. And that's one, inventory, evaluating each year all of our assets, including our vehicles, and checklist, basically, is what we're looking at, is a checklist for every time you take a vehicle out. So beyond that, I will look to staff to see if they have any additional information on these specific tires, or Director Harris, if we would have to return with you to you with which vehicles these are.
I just want to make sure that they're not low when they leave. And then we got a flat tire because it looks like they went out and repaired that tire. Because the tow company actually went out there and actually repaired those tires or changed them.
So we'll, we'll need to, oh.
I don't know the exact situation. We'd have to look into it. But I do know that we do check our vehicles, you know, whenever we get in them and take off. If there's a flat tire to happen during normal operating hours and our Public Works Department and the Fleet Department is on, or working during the normal operating hours, they will come and assist and change the tires. Usually, it's after hours, like if a vehicle gets a flat tire at 1:00 in the morning for whatever purpose or whatever reason, we would have a company come out and change that because we won't call someone in on overtime to go change the tire. It's cheaper for us to have a tow company come replace the tire.
Are these city vehicles or they, if it was, if it was fire and police, I've seen it before where it's fire and police that would say it. But could this be fire and police vehicles?
I don't know that answer. Possibly. And then the other thing is if someone takes a pool car, and I don't know, we'd have to look into it. But if I were to take a pool car, for example, down the hill to go to a conference or something like that, and I were to get a flat tire, the direction is call AAA or call the tow company to come change it. We're not going to send the people down to it.
This, I think, I do believe this tow company is in Barstow.
Okay.
Yep. So, all right, if we can just, because one of the, one of the tires is $366. That would tell me that's a big truck. I mean, I understand our fire department could roll into a place and catch a nail. I get that. And, but I'm just curious to make sure that we're doing the safety inspections to make sure we're good. So. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. I'm going to ask for staff to answer some of the questions that were asked by the public. I will answer one from Mr. Hernandez, which was Number 12. I have already spoken to the, we have this on the agenda later in Number 16. I've already spoken to the city manager and asked to bring it tonight that Boots and Bling with United Way gets added to that list. And I'm going to ask council if they have any others. It's going to be open at that time. And for his question on Number 11, I believe when we come out with the general plan, we're going to have that answer. Do we want to bring that sooner with the?
Let me jump in, Mayor, if I could on that one.
Yes, go ahead.
So yes, the city is evaluating and is in the process of preparing a sewer master plan that will cover our update for the general plan period through 2048 and beyond of the sewer plant improvements we're going to need to service the demand through that period. That will come concurrent with the general plan update in early next year.
Okay. So hopefully that answered that question. With that, Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, I have Mayor Proton Rose for questions.
Thank you. Yes, thank you so much. I do have a question. When, or there was a first and a second on a report that was requested in regards to the total cost that Ms. Tank was referring to. And she also asked why we're still paying for utilities at BRTech. Can we get those, that report? How, how much longer do we need? It's been two months. How much longer do we need to get that report? And can you answer right now why we're still paying the utilities at BRTech?
I will have to look to staff too, and I'm looking at Director Harris to provide any information she might have. I understood as far as returning with the information, I did not realize that that was a report out to a council meeting, at a council meeting. I thought it was to get the information. But I'll also look to Director Harris to provide that information on that utility.
So as far as the utilities, we, we've spoken with BRTech in regards to the utility services. As of September, I believe it was 20th, it was late in the month of September, the utilities have been disconnected. BRTech has now set the utilities back into their name. So we will no longer receive any billing. There was some crossover because we were in the midst of finalizing the contract arrangement to do the repairs to the facility. And so since everything has been finalized on that front, we are no longer custodian of the utilities for that facility. As far as the reporting, I have spoken to Ms. Tank separately. She did send me a request for information via email. It was a simple request to obtain some information regarding the expenditures for the BRTech facility. And I answered that question. I am unaware that it was a first or a second. And if it, if it is, I will gladly bring that information to council.
Thank you. I also just want to address the United Way. Thank you for, for everything that you represent through the United Way and contribute, your contributions to our city as a business owner. I'm glad that you guys are doing this, so thank you.
Okay, seeing no more questions from council, we'll go to, Madam Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Yes. The consent calendar reads as follows. Item 6, minutes for the joint special meeting, closed session, held August 4, 2025, at 5:30. The recommended action is to approve minutes as presented. Item 7 is the, are the minutes for the joint special meeting, held September 16, 2025, at 5:15. The recommended action is to approve minutes as presented. Item 8, the minutes for the joint special meeting, closed session, held September 24, 2025, at 5:30 PM. The recommended action is to approve minutes as presented. Item 9, the ratification of accounts payable expenditures for September. The recommended action is to approve and ratify expenses as audited for checks 100752 through 101033 totaling $4,8,236.50. And wires 1191 through 1196, and 1199 through 1206 totaling $572,710.94. For the agency breakdown as follows. City, $4,382,942.34. Fire, $198,005.10 for a grand total of $4,580,947.44. Item 10 is the acceptance of the fiscal year 2023 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Award as a sub-recipient through the San Bernardino County Fire Protection District Office of Emergency Services. The recommended action is authorize staff to accept the sub-recipient award of the fiscal year 2023 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice, Justice Grant in the amount of $21,813 and to appropriate funds in the amount of $21,813 to account numbers as follows. One, 2023 JAG revenue account, 218615116639, and the expenditure account, 21821821807727. Item 11 is the final acceptance for the wastewater treatment plant pond, 1 and 2 pumping system. The recommended action is staff recommends that the city council take the following actions. One, to approve the final acceptance of Project WWTP 25001, the wastewater treatment plant pond, 1 and 2 pumping system. And two, to authorize staff to file the attached notice of completion. Item 12 is the award of community promotional funds fee waiver for the use of the Harvey House by Mojave Valley United Way for the annual Boots and Bling event on November 8, 2025. Recommended action is staff recommends that the city council approve in-kind donations in the form of fee waivers totaling $2,801.54 for the use of the Harvey House during the Boots and Bling event scheduled for November 8, 2025. Side note, we will make sure that the correction of spelling is made. Item 13 is the approval of updated memorandums of understanding with units 1 and 2. The recommended action is staff recommends that the city council take the following action. One, approve the MOU with unit 1 and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement on the city's behalf, attachment B. And two, to approve the MOU with unit 2 and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement on the city's behalf, attachment D. And that is the end of the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, I'll call for a motion in a second. I have a motion by Councilmember Hernandez to approve the consent calendar, second by Councilmember Noble. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
And the motion to approve the consent is unanimous by zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, we'll move on. We have no deferred items. Business action items. Number 14, Planning Commission Notice of Upcoming Vacancy, One Seat, December 31, 2025. Recommended action, staff recommends that the city council, number one, direct the city clerk to publicize the announcement of the opening of the planning commission and to approve the application submission timelines specified in the staff report. Number two, designate two council members to participate in an ad hoc committee, which will have the specific and temporary duty of selecting commissioners to fill the one vacancy position. And number three, the city council may provide alternate direction as desired. City Manager, Ms. Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I would like to introduce Director Heldrich to provide this presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor, council, what the item we have before you tonight is, as the mayor described, is to appoint somebody or start the advertisement and then appoint council members to do the interview process in the filling of the vacant seat that will be coming up. Council, the previous rules used to be is if the planning commissioner wanted to continue on, they would make that recommend, or they would make that a written notice and then we would present that to council. But the rules were changed several years ago that council wanted to take a more proactive approach and be involved with the reappointing or the appointing of planning commissioners. So that is the item that you have before you tonight, is to direct the city clerk's office to start that advertisement process and to get the interview process going as well, once we have the applications. With that, that concludes my presentation. And Maribel has a lot of the details too on this. She's the one that's been doing the advertising and everything for these events, these seats in the past, and she will help us do that this time as well.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Did you have anything to add before I go to council? Okay. Mayor Proton Rose.
Thank you. So I have kind of an old list. It's a 2023 of the planning commission. I would actually, I'm going to request that if everybody needs an updated list, that we can get it, please. But I do have a question on the vacant position. Is this the position that the original appointment happened in 2013 and has been seated until the term expires 12/31 of this year?
Yes, that is correct. That is Andrew Zimer's position. As Mr. Heldrich stated, the policy was if the commissioner wanted to remain on the seat, that recommendation would come to council, and council kept voting him on. The process has changed where if he wants to continue to serve on the planning commission, he has to reapply and go through the interview process, just like everybody else would.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I'm going to, seeing no more requests to speak, go to public comment.
Yes, we have one. Mr. Mike Hernandez.
Thank you, sir. I'd like you to consider something that was done years ago. They used to have alternates on the planning commission, which made it easier to fill the spots when they became vacant. I'd like you to consider having alternates again, because there are times when they can't get commissioners to have the meeting, so the alternate would come in and sit in, and it would, it really served the community a lot better. And it was cost efficient, because if you cancel the meeting because you don't have a quorum, it costs the city quite a bit of money. Then you have to readvertise and everything else. It's just a thought. You might consider doing it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Bring it back to council for, sorry.
We have no more comment.
Bring it back to council for questions. Mayor Protem Rose, questions?
Thank you, Mayor. So, how would an alternate look as far as they would be on call if, let's say, somebody called in sick late, sick or could not make the meeting at last minute? Would the alternate also, can this council say the alternate would also get the stipend, or only if the alternate was actively acting as a commissioner?
Mayor, council, I have seen that be structured a couple of different ways. The most common approach is to provide that the alternate is invited to attend every meeting, or alternates plural, and given a seat at the dais, and then they only step in and vote if their main commissioner is not present, the same model that LAFCO uses and some of the other special districts use. And typically, the council would authorize a stipend for the alternates, as the same as the commissioners. It wouldn't be required, but that would, what we would expect. And the model that some places use is one or two alternates, five commissioners, one or two alternates on top.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rose. Councilmember Noble?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am.
Is the term for Andy is up? He's done his four years?
Yes, that is correct. When his term is up, until a new commissioner is selected, he could remain in his position until he's replaced.
But this is because he's done a complete four year?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Noble. Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. I was an alternate, and alternates did not get paid.
Ah, past councils made another choice.
I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, we're at questions right now. Is that a question?
So, that's a question.
Yeah, so the council could set it up that alternates get paid. I guess in the past, the alternates before weren't paid, but the council could decide to pay the alternates.
Okay.
Either is legal.
And we would have to come up with a policy, correct?
Right, we would need to amend the ordinance to create the alternates, which we could bring that forward if the council so desired.
Okay. And it's my understanding that there are problems with the planning commission not always having them all present and meetings being canceled?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have no more requests to speak. I'll ask, request a motion.
I move to approve that we put it out for advertisement.
Okay, so I have a motion to put out for advertisement. There's a second part. If we approve that, we'll have to appoint two council members. So, I'll call for the, would it be appropriate to separate this, too?
Yeah, I mean, the council could run them separately.
Okay.
I will second to advertise as soon as possible so that we can fill the vacant position, whether it's with the incumbent or with another applicant.
Okay, I've got a first on item, item one of 14, to put it out for announcement by Councilmember Hernandez, a second by Mayor Protem Rose, and I'll call for the, I'm sorry, is there any discussion? No, we're voting on just number one. We'll come back. We're separating it, yes. If this doesn't pass, we don't have to do number two. Okay, I'll call for the vote.
And the motion to approve to advertise to fill the position passes five zero.
Okay, so being that that passed, we will need a committee. And what I would like to do then is motion to go into discussion, so we can discuss our committee.
Second.
Okay, I, okay, I've got a motion by Mayor Protem, a second by, by Councilmember Noble. And we're going to go into discussion to appoint our committee. Is there anyone wanting to speak? Councilmember Noble.
Thank you, ma'am. Because me and Councilman Hernandez were in the last selection, I think it'd be mohoo to allow the other two council members to take part in it and pick the next planning commission.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Does anyone want to make a motion on a committee?
I move that we appoint Mayor Protem and Councilmember Williams to be on the committee.
Do I have a second?
And I second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hernandez, a second by Councilmember Noble, that we form the committee with the Mayor Protem, Barbara Rose, and Councilmember Williams. I'll call for the vote.
And the motion to appoint Mayor Protem Rose and Councilmember Williams to the committee passes five zero.
Thank you. And with that, number three is not necessary. We'll move on to number 15, adopt revised city council policy memorandum, number 2025-20, Cannabis Committee Benefit Program Policy to Remove Committee Benefits Committee. The recommended action, consider removal of the Committee Benefits Committee from policy memorandum, number 202520, Cannabis Committee Benefits Program Policy as requested by council. Attachment one, red line of policy memorandum, 2025-20, Cannabis Committee Benefits Program Policy. Attachment number two, clean draft policy memorandum, number 2025-20, Cannabis Committee Benefits Program Policy. City Manager, Ms. Clayton.
Mayor, members of the council, before I turn it over to the city attorney to provide this update, I just wanted to give additional information that we do have the cannabis fund balance of 832,000, as this fund has been collecting for three years. And once this item is approved, we can move forward. But with that, I am going to ask City Attorney Summers to provide the presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Clayton. Mayor and council, what's it for you is coming back from the discussion, really, the agenda item title covers it, but this builds on the discussion on October 7, to revise the Cannabis Community Benefits Program Policy to delete the committee. What that would mean instead is that the city manager and staff would bring forward recommendations for expenditures consistent with the policy, which would then come to the city council for public input, public comment, and then a council decision on each proposed cannabis expenditure. With that, staff would recommend approval as directed by the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Questions from council? Mayor Protem Rose.
Thank you. So, I see that within the policy, it talks about definition, city manager, city manager and their, and, or city manager or their designee. Is there a reason why we didn't put or designate throughout the policy after city manager?
Oh, so once it's defined upfront as city manager or designate, then every other reference makes in the designate component?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rose. Seeing no other requests to speak, do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Bring it back to council for discussion. Any discussion? I'm sorry, motion?
Motion?
Did you have a question?
No, I don't have a question.
Okay, then I'll call for a motion.
No, sir. I recommend staff recommendation to consider removing it from the policy. And recommend a, the committees, no, I recommend the action of the staff to approve the recommendation of actions.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Noble, which is staff's recommendation, and a second on that by Councilmember Hernandez. Is there any discussion? I'll call for the vote.
And the motion to approve item 15 passes four zero with no vote from Mayor Protem Rose.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll move on to item 16, adopt resolution number 5247-2025, adopting community promotional fund, community, sorry, of policy number 202522 that consolidates and supersedes the existing community promotional fund policy, policy number 50-01, and youth community promotional fund policy revision 5282024. Recommendation, staff recommends adopting the proposed resolution number 5247-2025 to adopt the proposed policy number 2025-22 to consolidate the city's two existing community promotional fund policies and to provide clear, consistent guidelines for community promotional fund administration while ensuring accountability, transparency, and maximum community benefit for Measure Q revenues allocated to the community promotional fund. City Manager, Ms. Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Before I turn this item over to City Attorney Summers for presentation, I also wanted to give additional information in that the Measure Q community promotional fund budget is $403,000 for this fiscal year, 2526. And as Mayor Silva stated, that staff is recommending that there is a motion to amend Exhibit A, which calls out the events that are approved annually designated to the city manager for approval, to include the Boots and Bling event, the Gem and Mineral Show, the sport shooting banquet, and the annual wine auction. So, with that, I will turn it over to City Attorney Summers for the presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Clayton. This before you, also from the October 7 meeting, and before that, from several discussions at council and at rules and policy, is a proposed amended and combined Measure Q community promotional fund policy that would combine the two existing community promotional fund policy and youth community promotional fund policy into a single combined Measure Q community promotional fund policy. The changes from the 7th are to add the list of pre-approved events that would be eligible for funding, and there to, I'll note that the list would be Light Up the Night, the Main Street USA Festival and Car Show, Mardi Gras Parade, the Juneteenth Celebration, the New Mexico Chili Cook Off and Bellin Fiestas, and then with the addition of Boots and Bling. And City Manager Clayton, can you read the other two there?
The sport and, sport shooting banquet and the annual wine fest auction, the Kwanis, combined with another agency, annual wine auction.
Thank you. And with the other-
Gem and Mineral, I apologize.
Oh, and the Gem and Mineral, right? Yeah. Gem and Mineral Show. Is that the Main Street USA Festival? And I will invite other events that the council may wish to add. Also in the edits are, the other main edit is to broaden the eligibility for nonprofits, to nonprofits that are exempt under state and federal law from taxation because they provide services to the community and are no one person can take home the revenue, which includes the typical 501(c)(3) we see, but also several other subsets of, in Internal Revenue Code, Section 501, that picks up civic leagues, horticultural organizations, and other types of nonprofits. And then last, to provide, actually, two more. One, to provide that the funding for both grants and in-con contributions for Barstow school applicants are supplemental funding, not primary funding. And then last, to advance this timeline so that applications would be due each year, the second Thursday in July, the application review period in August, and the decisions by the city council, the first or second regular meeting in September. The policy is also clear that the council can consider an off-cycle request for funding if it's warranted. The last point I would note is, unlike the prior item, the cannabis funds, here, the amount of money to be available for Measure Q promotional fund each year is a policy decision by the city council with each budget. There is no defined amount in Measure Q, nor in any other law that requires a certain amount to be spent on this. Instead, it's a policy choice by the council every fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. With that, I'll bring it to council for questions of staff. Councilmember Hernandez.
I was wondering why the Route 66, the one we just had, wasn't on the list?
That's Main Street, USA.
Yeah, Main Street is there? Oh, okay, all right. And the parade? Okay, all right, we're fine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that's on page 21.
Thank you. Seeing no more requests, questions from council, public comment?
Do we have one, Mr. Mike Hernandez?
Thank you, sir. I'm a little confused, and I hope you can clarify this for me. Right now, they're taking out $403,000. Is that all from the Measure Q, or is that part cannabis and part Measure Q? That's one of my questions. And are you going to change the system that the money that was set aside for the youth and the seniors are going to be subject every year? They're not going to be given the same amount? Or is that going to be used for something else? I think that needs to be clarified, especially for the seniors and the youth. And the balance has left at $203,000. Does that cover all the items under Measure Q? Or is part of that money coming from the cannabis fund? And when the cannabis fund is going to be allocated, are you going to have something that says how it's going to be allocated? And will it be allocated the same year by year? Because originally, it was supposed to be a one-time allocation. I want to know if it's going to be consistent or only a one-time allocation of the funds that are there. And you're only going to spend the funds that come in on an annual basis, from my understanding. Only those funds that come in on an annual basis. And that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
We have no more comment.
With that, I'll bring it back to council for questions. Councilmember Noble?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. I just had an additional question. You mentioned the Boots and Bling, we added the wine auction, and something about sports and, what was that one?
The sports shooting banquet?
Sports shooting? Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I believe that event is the High Desert Cheaters event, right? Yes. All right, I see no more questions from council. Staff, could you answer Mr. Hernandez's? There was four questions, I believe. The balance of 403K, is that from cannabis and Measure Q? I might have staff answer. We know the answer. Yes.
No, that is Measure Q budget. It is, as City Attorney Summers stated, a policy decision from council to designate the budget each year. Staff recommended 403,000, and the council approved that for the budget this year, which does include multiple accounts for youth, seniors, et cetera, the planned community promotions. But again, that is designated each year, and it is only Measure Q funding.
Thank you. Did you get the other questions? As I mentioned earlier, my writing. If not, Mr. Hernandez, please come see staff afterwards.
Perhaps I could add a little more there. So, as I understand the questions, it's essentially, is the 400,000 both combined cannabis and Measure Q? No. That money is only Measure Q. The cannabis is separate. That's about 830,000 right now in the cannabis fund, which is intended, per the policy just approved in the prior item, to be on one-time purchases. The council can spend it legally, if desired, on ongoing purchases, but the policy that was just amended is one-time purchases, such as supplies, equipment, one-time events, things like that. And the reason for that is because the amount of that is uncertain every year. It depends on how the cannabis industry flows, ebbs and flows. Measure Q funds, it's an annual amount, but it is subject- Measure Q funds, it's an annual amount, but it is subject every year to the policy choice of the budget. Staff has historically recommended a certain amount for seniors, a certain amount for youth, and a certain amount for other promotional purposes, but those are just staff recommendations. It's up to each council every year to approve a defined amount of money out of Measure Q, which could be more or less or the same as last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Any other questions from council? With that, I'll call for a motion.
So move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hernandez, a second by Councilmember Williams. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
For item 16, it passes 5-0. We are adding on the, just for our notes or minutes, the Exhibit A, we're adding the Boots and Bling, the High Desert Shooters, the Kiwanis Annual Wine Auction, and the Gem and Mineral Show, just for clarification.
Uh, yes, that's correct. The Boots and Bling, Gem and Mineral Show, Kiwanis Crossroad Annual Wine Auction, and the sports shooting banquet.
Thank you.
Call for the vote?
Oh. We voted. I, that's just restating for the minutes what was approved.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. All right, we'll move on to 17. The extension of the park maintenance agreement with Barstow Heights Community Service District for 90 days. Staff recommends that the city council approve a 90-day extension of the current park maintenance agreement with the Barstow Heights Community Service District to allow staff time to complete the property tax analysis and return with a proposed revised agreement. City Manager, Ms. Clayton.
Hi, Mayor, members of the council. This item is a, an extension to an agreement that is in, has been in place. We are currently under a five-year agreement that is set to expire at the end of this month. We have the option to extend for another five years. During that process of evaluating the extension, staff determined that the city receives property tax revenue to provide the maintenance services to the county parks identified in the, in the staff report for the Barstow Heights Community Services District. These were part of a parks district that dissolved at that time. The, the district itself dissolved. The CSD, Community Services District, remained intact. The city had already been providing maintenance for these parks, again, from the prior agreement, based on the property tax revenue allocated to the, to the CSD that is directed to the city. We are looking into the details as to how much the city is receiving. It is not a specified line item. This extension is to give staff additional time to work with the county Property Tax Division and determine the details. So look to Assistant City Manager Chapa to provide any additional information if he has such. She has been attending the meetings and-
No further information, really. I think, I think the city manager hit most of the main points. If there's any questions from council, obviously, we're, we're here to answer them.
Thank you, Mrs. Clayton and Mr. Chapa. Any questions from council for staff? Seeing none, do we have any requests to speak from the public?
No, we do not.
Bring it back to council for questions. Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So move to extend.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hernandez, a, a second by Councilmember Noble. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll go on to public safety updates. Fire Chief Cisneros.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and community. Just want to kind of give you the, the updates for the Fire, Fire District. Today is a solemn day that we engaged in a safety stand-down. I ordered a safety stand-down for the fact of today commemorates the one-year passing of Garrett Miller, who passed away while on duty here, serving the community. But he's not the only one that we've recognized today. We've recognized also Engineer Dave Spink, as well as Captain John McNellis, who also, you know, committed their lives to the community and through service in all our duty-related deaths, and that's within the last five years. So currently, right now, we do have family and friends over at Fire Station 361, kind of commemorating. And like I said, part of that safety stand-down was, I provided dinner for the family and friends of the crews, and they're just over there, just having their remembrance and talking stories. So with that being the safety stand-down, I do appreciate any kind words that the community has over the years regarding these three heroic individuals that committed their lives to this community, as well as their last breath serving this community. So definitely appreciate all the support you guys have done for your firefighters over the last year and their ultimate sacrifice while engaged in service as servants to this community. So besides that, that's the only thing I have from the Fire District, unless there's anything else.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to sitting in for our police chief, Captain Arthur.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, and staff, and members of the public. So last week, just a few updates to last week, Wednesday, it was our quarterly Coffee with the Cough that we had at the Starbucks set next to Burger King, Roberta in Maine. It was always, it's always a good event, and it's teaming up with, with local coffee shops, getting to interact with the, the citizens who come to speak with us, ask questions, but also the staff. They're always very friendly and welcoming. That same day, a lot of the command staff were down in Ontario. It was the annual Blue Ribbon Breakfast. They do annual, this is a recognition of, for last year's, the 2024 Officers of the Year. They recognize law enforcement agencies in San Bernardino County and Riverside County. And so our officer, our Jason Rodriguez, he was our Officer of the Year for last year, so he got recognized there. It was a, it was really good events. It's very cool to see that many people who, who are out there supporting us, in addition to the law enforcement family. And then last Friday, our agency participated with San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department and other law enforcement agencies under the Operation Consequences. It's a, a crime suppression initiative that's throughout the county. It was a very successful event. They were there for, we worked for about 12 hours that day, and during that time, there was approximately 450, what's the word? I'm sorry, my mind just went blank. Self-initiated proactive enforcement stops ranging from traffic stops as well as pedestrian checks, and they did 57 probation checks. Totally, they, total, they arrested 81 people, and we collected nine guns. There were five pistols and four rifles that were collected. And a little bit of, it's, it's not a significant amount of meth, of drugs, but it was 25 grams of drugs, and there was a pretty significant amount of money that was seized for various crimes that they were used for. I don't have the dollar amount. They did tell me that, I just forgot to write it down, so my apologies. But overall, it was a great event, and this is something we try to do annually. So hopefully, we will, you know, have this again. It's very helpful for our community. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Captain Arthur. With that, we'll move on to council committee reports. Councilmember Hernandez.
I had no prior committee reports, but I will be attending Javier Quality District Meeting on October the 27th, and that will be the last meeting for the year for them. And at that time, I will also engage over the cannabis odor in our community. And I want the public to know that we are already engaged in dealing with the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez, Councilmember Noble.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. The 14 October meeting that we were supposed to have with the Military Affairs was canceled due to the furlough of a lot of individuals that participated in that event. We also canceled the Victor Valley Transit Authority Meeting also on the 20th of October, and the reason we canceled that, because we didn't have any business items at that time, and most of the staff were on a training that, that week. Our next Military Affairs Meeting is scheduled for the 11th, but I don't think it's going to be on the 11th. I think it's going to be moved based on the, the date of Veterans Day. So I'm pretty sure that's going to be moved probably to that Tuesday, but I'm not 100% sure, and I'll put that out at the next council meeting. Then the Victor Valley Transit Authority, we're going to have that on November 17th, and that'll be right here in our chambers at 9:30. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Noble. Councilmember Williams.
I got nothing.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Mayor Pro Tem Rose.
Mayor, I'll defer to you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rose. As mentioned earlier, October 8th through the 10th, the three of us here attended the League of Cities. I just want to remind everybody, my notes are in the lobby. I don't know that I'll have enough time to report out in the six minutes. That's why I put the notes in writing. On the 16th, I attended the SBCTA Metro Valley Meeting. There was nothing on the agenda for Barstow at that. On the 20, oh, this morning, I attended the Barstow Chamber of Commerce, and they actually had cannabis on their agenda this morning. And they had some owners there, not in the dispensary, or as he liked to call it, sales, more in the, I think, manufacturing. And it was interesting. So just a little bit of information from the other side. And Ms. Hernandez, if you could check for me, I saw an email today about an upcoming SBCTA Director's Meeting. I have nothing on the calendar for October. I don't know if that's referring to the November one, and I'll just communicate with you tomorrow. With that, we will go to business of the council. Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. I'm approaching this for, this perspective. Positive news for our community about a group that contributes to our community but rarely gets credit. I want to thank the Knights of Columbus for doing the tree twit our mayor and Councilman Williams. They also made a generous donation to our Barstow Crossroad Kiwanis Club to assist us in serving the children of our community. But they, they don't make a big deal about things, but I think it's time we recognize them within our community. I also want to thank the educators that serve our Barstow Unified School District that were our youth who returned to serve our community with their skills. We take them for granted also. I want to thank our veterans and several service members who participated in our salute to the armed services at our Mardi Gras Parade. It's been long overdue, and I think it was wonderful that we, as a Kiwanis Club, made them the head of the, the parade. Unfortunately, with the government shutdown, our military were not allowed or possible for them to attend, but I want to thank them for their duty. And I feel we need to count our blessings and work as the family we are to make Barstow better. And we are addressing the cannabis odor smell in Lynnwood area. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Noble?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I attended the Cigar Under the Star over at the Harvey House just on the 10th, and I had a fantastic time dressing up in the 1920s and '30s and so forth. It was a huge event, the fundraiser for the college, for the scholarships and so forth, and I was honored to attend that. I also attended the Main Street US Festival for the Car Show. It was a lot of people out there, and if you didn't go or attend, you missed a good one. A lot of historical events as far as cars, the '20s, maybe even the '15s, because there was a lot of 1960 vehicles that were on display for the event. So I attended that, and I had a fantastic time. Also attended the Mardi Gras Parade, and Councilman Hernandez mentioned that as well. Very good event. I didn't get a chance to attend the League, League of City this past due to the furlough that is happening out in Fort Irwin. And being a Fort Irwin employee out there, I was affected by that, and the position that I have out there caused me to not be able to attend the League of City. So my colleagues, I know they did, and they brought back good information, and I know it was well worth it, but I do plan on attending it in the future. I also want to thank the PD and Fire Department for what you do every day. I was out there in the streets, and I seen numerous cops and, and officers undercover, whatever you want to call them, out there doing, doing their thing, and I thank you for what you guys are doing, and that is something that we definitely, definitely need in our city from time to time to make sure that our city is safe. PD and Fire Department, both, thank you for what you do. Mayor, if I'm in order, I would like to close in honor of our fallen firefighters that Chief Cisneros talked about this evening.
I had made a note to ask Mr. Cisneros to rename those at closing so we could close in memory, but I was going to have him state the names again.
Okay, I appreciate it. And with that, staff, continue doing what you're doing. City manager, you're doing a fantastic job, regardless what other people may say, but I know, I know what you do every single day. Please keep doing what you're doing, and the namesakes, they're, they're not going to be happy, but I am happy, and I'm pretty sure staff is happy in what direction that we're going with this, with our city. So keep doing what you're doing, and keep your head up. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Noble. Councilmember Williams.
First of all, I want to, I want to say to the folks that are on furlough, you know, I don't think many people realize that the Fire Department out there, the Police Department out there, the military police, they're not getting paid. They're working the gates, and it's a tough situation. It doesn't matter if you're a Democrat or Republican, this is a pretty bad situation for everyone. And for those civil servants that are out there as well, you know, times are going to get a little more rough for those guys. You know, if you see a military person in Walmart or anything else, just, you know, walk up and tell them thank you, you know, or let them know that you care, because, I mean, sometimes that keeps a person going. So definitely feel, feel for those guys. It's not easy, especially when they got to pay their bills like us, right? So Fire Chief, I want you to know, we, we heard you the last week or two when we had our meeting. I want you to know that we understand exactly where you're coming from. I want you to know personally from me that your, your value to us is more than what anybody else could ever imagine. You are, you are definitely a hero, and you're definitely a great guy. So I want you to know, in that meeting we had, we definitely hear you. Captain Arthur, I, I got to tell you, you know, we've had our moments, but I'm going to tell you, you're a strong guy, and we appreciate what, what you do, and especially the chief. And I got to tell you, we're all lucky to have both of you guys, so I wanted you to know that. I will say that, like the Mayor Pro Tem said before, is that, you know, when we're bringing things back, we can't forget the residents. If they're, if they're bringing something to us and we approve it and we bring it back, we, we, we can't, we can't make those mistakes. We got to, we got to snatch them up. We got to, we got to bring it back. When we do things like that, it, it, it makes the public not trust us. It makes, uh, uncomfortable for everybody else. And City Manager, I, I, I think you're doing a hell of a job. So I, I agree with Councilman Noble. What we have to do is make sure that we get you your support for the new hires, management, you know? I was against it, still am, but I, I do appreciate what I'm seeing. And Kim, once again, really appreciate what you're doing. And so, you know, pretty satisfied with that. But I get where Mr. Hernandez is talking about with the numbers and the, and the salaries, you know? It's, it's a concern- you know, it's, it's a concern for us as, as a whole. But I just want to say one more time to our local heroes, you know, we appreciate you. Public works, you're absolutely beautiful, love you guys. It's amazing. I went from being mad at them to now loving them, so especially Tommy. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Mayor Potem Rose.
I have nothing.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Rose. Noncommittee events I attended on the 10th, I also attended the College Foundation fundraiser, which was called Cigars Under the Stars. It was a fundraiser. On the 11th, I was invited to a pancake breakfast at Do Life Fellowship. I thought invited to serve, but I was invited to eat. Unfortunately, I had already had breakfast, but a lot of people to talk with there, so enjoyed that. And then, of course, on the 11th, we had the Main Street USA Car Show, and I did give out an award for the mayor, which was a Bronco. And what I appreciated, it was the photos. They showed what it looked like before, through the process, and of course, as it stood there on the grounds. Also, on the 11th, I attended the Kidso Special Event at the sports park. And then on the 11th, I went to the after-party event for the Main Street USA Car Show, and I mainly went there to talk to their MC because she does advertise Barstow on her social media. On the 14th, I went to the Pastoral, Barstow Pastoral Meeting. They asked for me to give them a date on Barstow. On the 15th, I went to the one-year ribbon cutting anniversary for the Craves Coffee Shop. On the 15th, I attended a committee, which is a committee of a lot of nonprofits. It's called Together We Can, and all these nonprofits come together. They give information about what they're doing, but they also form the one event, which is going to be in December, so we're looking for a location because Cora Harper probably won't be open. And last year, when they did that in November, the people were lined up two hours before the event from the entrance of Cora Harper past the fire station. So we're going to need a pretty big place. On the 17th, I attended the Desert Sanctuary Open House for just a short time, because then, yes, I did go and give out candy at the trunk or treat, which was an American Cruisers event, and then the Knights of Columbus, yes, donate their property to them. And then, of course, on the 18th, we all attended the Mardi Gras parade. I have some time left, so I want to share just one of the events in my notes that I attended at the League of Cities, and this one's called, "Are Council Meetings Getting Harder? How to Make Them Smoother?" So understand these are written in notes, so they're not full sentences. First topic, mind and approach. Shift from activism to servant. Many elected officials begin as activists, but activism and governance are different roles. Check your party at the door. Governance is about community, not partisanship. Governance is a team sport. You can accomplish anything without, you can't accomplish anything without at least two other votes. It's best when you can build support from four members. Mutual respect is essential. Know and follow process and procedures. Come to meetings prepared. Ask questions ahead of time to staff so staff can be ready with answers. Avoid got-you questions during meetings. Meetings of conduct and professionalism. Respect colleagues. Each has the same vote as the mayor. Conduct business at the dais, not through the media. Undermines trust if conversation happens outside formal settings. Do not pre-write comments. It suggests your decision was made before the public input. Leadership means listening, even when you know how to vote, how the vote may go. Acknowledge concerns. Look for compromises when possible. Public engagement in decorum. No clapping or cheering. It can intimidate those with opposing minority views. Now, I actually got up and asked a question on this one. I said, well, how does the public handle that? Because we do hear clapping. I'm not sure that I'm going to enforce that yet, but I might ask, you know, the public to not. But I would not enforce it and stop it because that would be free speech. But I totally understood how, when we have a topic here and a lot of people show up on that topic, if one or two people show up against it, they could be intimidated by the clapping. Public should address the full council, not individual members. If national issues are addressed, do the public have a clear policy on how to address them. Council handbook, I've seen this at the Asperia Chamber, because I attend some meetings by Zoom there. A council handbook is critical for the meeting decorum and clarity on roles. Example, when writing letters to other agencies, officials must clarify, "I am writing as an individual, not on behalf of this city." Sample of this can be found, or this letter could be found at arrogran.org. And then there were some, working with the city manager, so this was for city managers, post-meeting reflection. If a meeting doesn't go well, ask, "What would I have done differently?" Avoid stacking controversial items onto the same agenda. We would all appreciate that. Meet with stakeholders in advance to defuse tension and avoid large reactive crowds. And I've seen you do that, so thank you. And then the key takeaways, down to 38 seconds, so let's see. Effective governance requires collaboration, preparation, and respect. Transparency process builds trust. Leadership at the dais means managing both the room and the tone. Strong policies and handbooks create consistent expectations for everyone. With that, we're going to go on to the city manager comments. Ms. Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I have a brief report on the response to public comments. There was a question that whether there was a session on cannabis at the League of California Cities. I looked through the book, and I did not find one. I may have missed it, but I did, I went through all of the PowerPoints, and I did not come across that. There was a presentation, as the mayor stated, at the Chamber of Commerce breakfast today that gave some information. Will look to provide more information out to the public in some format beginning next year. I am looking, working with staff to get a better understanding of the operations, and I want to echo what Councilwoman Hernandez stated in response to the public comment is the odor has been identified. Staff and AQMD are working together for a solution. And the sidebar comment that the city manager passes that every day, I just want to share with the public that since COVID, I, I went through a pretty bad boat about at COVID twice. Second time, I completely lost my smell, completely lost my smell. I have some weird senses every once in a while, but that's it. So I have a problem, I don't notice that, that odor as I pass by, but we do have the team working for a solution. Last thing that I'll touch on is just that we were supposed to have the financing options for streets, the streets financing item. Back at this meeting, we were gathering more information, and it will be at the next meeting instead, along with some other budget presentations. So with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Clayton. So prior to joining, Fire Chief Cisneros, could you please repeat the names of those heroes, and then we're going to close in their memory?
Engineer David Spink, Captain John McNellis, and Captain Garrett Miller.
Thank you, Fire Chief Cisneros. With that, by consensus of the members, without objection, this meeting will be adjourned at 8:56 PM in memory of those heroes. This closes the open session, but we are going to continue with item number two on closed session, which will be reported out at our next regular council meeting. Thank you.